I can guarantee you a sign in discussion.
Yeah, I am your representative. You're right. And oh, yes, you're right.
Okay.
Anyway, so I'm like, you know, the guy who's got all this, who's leading this, right?
How are you guys doing?
Good.
Good.
I love my son is that little copy?
Oh, sure.
Is that time?
Don't you guys, don't you guys have some crazy?
Oh, we're good to go?
Oh, I see. Okay. Well, a little bit quieter introduction, everybody, but welcome to the city council workshop for December 5th, 2023 for the city of Bonnie Lake. First thing we do is salute our flags up by the conspan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Meeting has started through the O C. And Mayor McCullough, Deputy Mayor Carter, Councilmember Baldwin.
Council.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember McLemmons.
Here.
Councilmember Swatman.
Present.
Councilmember Watson.
Here.
Councilmember Roach.
Here.
Very good. I'm glad everybody was able to show up using your oars and sails and perhaps Councilmember Fullerton, you can show us how to use a flotation device later on.
Pull down on the rip so you can use the tubes to manually inflate it.
Check under my seat. There's nothing under me.
Yeah.
We're in trouble.
All right.
McLemmons might be able to help with that, too.
Yeah? Well, so we can all get home in a timely and dry manner. We have a presentation, an update on the M R A C. All right. Mr. Clevenger.
Let's see. I just wanted to give you guys a quick update first. I figured out the microphone stand, so I gotta raise it up a little bit. This is appropriate height.
Is it on?
I'll keep it short.
Is it on?
Working on insurance. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We're working on insurance. It seems to be impossible in this industry. Well, that industry is having a hard time. Insurance really had a hard time. So we're really, we reached out to three different brokers. The most recent information we have is there's one person that's interested out there. So we're working through that process. It has taken us a long time. Mr. Vodapich, very patient. I've sent a lot of email updates trying to get this done. So what we're going to try to do is shift gears a little bit as we're waiting on this one broker to work with us. We're gonna try to work with a contractor to see if we can get on their policy. This broker that we're working through seems to think that would work best, would be quick, painless, and probably cheap. And those are all things that we like.
Yeah.
We'll try to get that done before I come talk to you guys January 23rd. So I can deliver some good news, which today I can't deliver, but still trying. We're still working at it. So just asking for patience. Insurance industry is having a hard time right now. So that's the update on that. Other than that, we're still moving through. I talked to a builder today. They do metal buildings. Coma Lakewood, Merritt Construction. They're gonna visit a site with us up in Sohamish County to look at a viable building up there and give us a quote on the structure. So we're still moving forward. We're still trying to get ideas. We met with a local builder out there recently, and they gave us some ideas on how to approach this multi-sport type of aspect. So we really appreciate it for some of the help that we're getting from local builders, people that are interested in the local community. Everybody's been very supportive. And again, we really appreciate your support as well. Let's see. I also wanted to take a minute to thank the outgoing council members. Councilmember Watson, thank you so much for your support. I know Midtown has been a torch you lit a long time ago, and I hope that I can do a little bit to keep that flame going.
Hope so, too. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I know those things and parts are very important to you. So I'm gonna try to do my best. We're talking to, I know I mentioned it before, but a large sporting entity that has some interest in putting a field there, a small field.
Be great.
So hopefully that gets things going. If nothing else, at least we get something.
Right.
So that'll hopefully start things. So we're continuing to have those conversations and continue to try to work out partnerships. Not that we're gonna work them out, but that we're gonna work out partnerships so that people come and present them to you guys.
Thank you.
You guys can make those decisions. I'm just gonna try and draft a bit of the rough part, and then you guys can smooth it out. So thank you very much for all of your time in the council. I know that it's been a lot, it's been a lot of years and a lot of dedication. And you've been very kind. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Evans, thank you as well so much. It's, you know, when I came in, I'm usually pretty nervous, especially the first time. The welcoming, the levity that you brought, the questions you asked at the right times, some of them, they weren't easy. But they made me face those things that weren't easy, and I appreciate that very much. Again, the time and dedication that you put into this service is appreciated. And if nobody else has the opportunity, takes the opportunity, come in and say it before the holidays, I just want to say thank you very much as well.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Doug.
That goes for all the other council members, but especially the ones that are, they're leading. So thank you, guys. Any questions for M R A C or for me?
Well, why don't you take the insurance broker over to George's over here and court him over there. That'll get you signed pretty fast. Oh, B L T.
Maybe, maybe I can get a couple credit card swipes in. Eighteen hours. That's probably the best negotiation strategy I've heard.
Councilmember Roach has.
On the insurance question, so is it just that they're having a difficult time in the insurance world at this point? Or is it that you're trying to get a policy that they haven't written before? Or what's the problems?
Good question. It's both of those things. So when we approach them and we say we're a sporting organization that wants to get insurance for they really have a hard time. And when we explain it further, they begin to understand what it is we're asking for. It's just looking for a product out there in the world right now because insurance is so, being so protective, they're guarded. They don't want to take any risks. So if it's not something that they can see exactly what they're insuring and see exactly what the situation might be that they have, would have to act, they're hesitant to provide a quote or even engage in a conversation. And I'm hearing that they, it didn't used to be like that. The insurance we have for the club and for the players and coaches and staff for facilities is a different, very different policy than something to go out and walk along an abandoned farm. So when we tell them, you know, what we're trying to do is just get bids and quotes, they don't understand the product that, that we're trying to ask them to sell us. So again, you know, we're, we're just changing gears and we're trying to go with an existing contractor and just get up right on their policy. And that seems to be the most creative way that we've been able to think through it. So I think we have, we're gonna have a solution here in the next 30 days.
Oh, good. Yeah, I was hoping what the timeline might be on that.
Yeah, you know, I, I try to work on it every day to find, you know, new ways, new ways to approach it. I'm talking to this broker. He's got 33 years. Nick Stae is his name. He's out of Lakewood. I went and talked to him, sat down with him, and he's a huge supporter of the organization. His kids grew up in it. He's, he's well connected to the things that we're trying to do in the community, and he's a big supporter of it. He believes in it. It's just finding the broker that's willing to do the work to get us the insurance. So I understand the need for it. We just are trying to get creative.
All right. Councilmember Evans.
I'd be remiss if I didn't take one last opportunity to suggest that in, in order to get the policy, there is the option to buy the property. So that's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you for that. And we're considering both.
Good.
We are. I would write the check today if I had that.
It inbound.
You know, we're looking for that.
Yeah.
And we're trying to weigh all the options. And I'm sure the people that have the ability to make the decisions, as they look at it, they're saying, well, if I, if I pay for that now, what's that looking downstream? Is that gonna stop us from being able to build or support what we're trying to do? So that, you know, it's a bit of a push-pull. It's taking some time to make that decision. But we are working through, you know, we met with the county executive. We had found solutions and just have a better understanding of what the large scope of this is.
What was Mr. Damir's response when you, when you met with him? How did that go?
He was, he was very excited.
Oh, good.
He mentioned three different times, the three things that he would love to do. Those were bringing a sports field obviously to that area.
Right.
Two is, is trying to work some solutions for the cultural resources and cultural historical significance of that area. And three was the trailhead. I said, if, you know, if you can provide those three things that we've been trying to work on for a long time.
Nice.
And the property to do it, he said, you know, I'll do everything that I can to find a way to support it.
Councilmember McLemmons, I saw your hand up first, and then Councilmember Fullerton, and I'll let y'all work it out.
Yeah, so I had two questions. One question was, so why is it M R A C's burden to carry the insurance? And why isn't not the city, isn't the city already got insurance for liable? And we're liable if they fall down the well, right?
No.
Part of the agreement that we had, right, or part of the terms for, for what we put in that?
They'd sue the city otherwise if they fell down the well, right?
Say it again.
They'd sue the city today if they fell down the well.
Right.
So it's wrapped up in part of an access and use agreement. So in order to give M R A C permission to access the property, get their consultants on the property, start doing excavation, you know, developing their plans and putting together their site plan, we want them to indemnify and hold us harmless. And along with that comes with insurance.
Okay.
Why are they having?
Because we're allowing them access onto city property.
All the support, like you referenced, the normal insurance with the sports organization, the basic stuff, you know, all the leagues have their own, you know, that kind of insurance for like the play field, but you're, you know, different.
Yeah, we're talking about falling down the well during a.
Because when, yeah, exactly. When the Little League plays with the city of Bonnie Lake, they have to sign that they have insurance to cover indemnify the city of Bonnie Lake.
For the athletes and the participants, right?
Correct.
But so did we have the same insurance for the guys that built the, the new field over there? Is that a similar agreement?
Well, that would be the construction agreement.
Say it again?
Yeah. Yeah, contractor would have to provide proof of insurance and name, name us as an additionally insured.
Which is essentially what he's looking at doing, is finding a contractor going under their policy essentially.
You're going under the contractor's.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. I'm just trying to understand what's unique about this situation, right? And because we obviously do this all the time. We obviously have liability currently.
Well, actually, this is pretty unique. We don't do this all the time.
Well, no, we, we, we have, we improve facilities all the time. We hire people to go come do that, right?
Correct.
Why is that? What I'm trying to understand is why is this different?
Because we're not allowing them to improve the property. What we're doing is entering into an access and use agreement that gives them permission to enter the property and then bring their consultants on board if necessary to do excavation work and develop a site plan. This is different than us building a ball field on our own city-owned property.
Okay. All right. So that leads to one more question. My last question. Living wage restrictions regardless of.
No.
Nope. Okay.
Yeah. Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, so the question I had was similar, but doesn't M R A C have insurance for all of the other fields? Do you own all of your fields? Or does M R C own all of the fields that they're currently running their, their sports teams on? Or do you lease it and then have to get insurance as the leasing?
So we, we lease all the fields that we're on through the school district, through cities. Currently, the, the insurance that we carry is through U S Club Soccer, and they only insure the players, coaches, any participants, referees for the time of the game. So the original creative solution I thought was to bring a whistle and a ball and say game on, and then it would be fun. But I kind of decided that was a bad idea to even bring up. I apologize now. So we're trying. We're getting as creative as we can to find solutions because I understand the need for it. It's just being a soccer organization, you know, when we say we want insurance, they're like, great, yeah, we can, we can get you insurance. And then we tell them what it's for, and they're like, yeah, we can't get you insurance.
Yeah.
Until it's not. And that, that falloff point is, it's immediate.
Yeah.
So I know through these conversations with different brokerages that I'm getting the same result, which means that the problem is, it's just not a product that's offered because of societal changes. Insurance is just an industry that's struggling right now.
Well, at least you have one nibble and, you have one nibble and you can work on that. So, yes.
And then we have solutions beyond it. So I'm gonna continue to work on those. But I hope I answered your question. Is it, it's through U S Club, and it just ensures the player.
So this is different because you're having to build the facility.
For now, this is just gonna be a stop cap in time where as we go through looking at the property and looking at how we can make the changes to it and inviting people out there, environmental biologists, traffic impact studies, builders, going onto the property and just making sure that if anybody does fall, hurt themselves. There's a lot of dangers that are documented out there, and I think everybody's able to see those. If we do, if somebody does get hurt, then we're able to make sure that they're covered. And, and then as we transition into a development agreement in those processes, then it'll be a different product. And that insurance will probably come through a general contractor.
Right.
We're just looking at identifying the contractor a little earlier in the process, trying to get on to their policy so that everything's happy. And the insurance representative I talked to has a copy of the use agreement and has looked at the request for insurance and said that it would be met by, by using a general contractor.
Perfect.
Doug, is this a one million, two million aggregate?
Two million.
Two, two.
Is it possible to self-fund? I mean, worst case scenario, you can't do anything. Put it up as a potential self-insured, self-funded insurers, insurance. I mean, nothing happens and the money comes back to you. You're not even adding any premiums, but just as a option for Scott to, to think about if, if, you know, things that don't fall where you can, that might be, you know, a final option.
It's an option. I'd certainly go to him with it, but I'm gonna be hesitant to do so.
For sure, for sure, yeah.
I'd tell him the industry's not willing to do it and insure it.
Yeah.
But you, yeah. I know, I know it's gonna be a tough one, but I will ask him.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's not a bad idea. You know, if, if he knows he's gonna be out there.
And I'm sure he's smart enough to figure out a way. He can take out his own insurance to insure, you know, no different than, you know, a, a, a organization that puts on a charity golf tournament with the hole-in-one. They're not buying that car. They buy insurance for that car. And maybe, you know, maybe he can self-fund an insurance policy or something like that that may help cover it in the event.
Yeah, yeah. I'll certainly have the discussion with him and see if it's possible. Hesitantly.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. Like I said, last case.
I know the answer.
Last case scenario, but.
It's creative. I hadn't thought of that. So thank you.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Doug. Appreciate it. All right, seeing, now we'll move on to open discussion. Does anybody, have anybody to discuss? Councilmember Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, past 12 years, I've gone to communities for families every month, just by every time, first Thursday of month. Councilperson Fullerton has gone, so has Dip America on a number basis. I wish someone after I leave would go down and participate whenever they can. Even if you don't agree with what the school district does, it's, you're helping the kids in the community. You have 30-plus people that come there that are resources to help out either a church, someone in town, or something that the city might need. And you don't know that unless you participate in that, what's going on. You don't know that we have 290-some kids that have no home, that sleep every night in somebody's couch or somebody's car. That's your only connection to what's going on with our citizens in Bonnie Lake. And I don't care about what the school district does, what their viewpoints are. And even anytime you want to see it, I'm willing to show it to you. You've been through it, and I don't know who else has been over to see it. But the things that we do for kids over there, we're giving Christmas presents for them now and stuff, and the kids are joyous and stuff. And the donations we get every once a month with the seniors, you heard me talk before, we take the bus from the senior center and we load up to a container full of clothing from donations to the kids' house, to the Kiwanis, and to the senior center. And we take that bus back and we bring money back to our community that goes back into the community to help people in here. So even though the school district doesn't do things that we like, we don't, I don't care about that. I want to help the kids. And you know what they're doing there. So I really hope that some of you at least go down once in a while at 3:00 main hours of the school district and just see what's going on. It's, it's good to be a part of it and happening, especially you, Merritt, to go down there on a regular basis. You've been there a couple of times. I know that. But it'd be, it's really important to me, and I hope you'll be involved with that.
That's this Thursday, correct?
It's tomorrow, yeah. Or this Thursday, yeah.
Yeah, Thursday.
Every Thursday?
Thursday.
Every, first Thursday of the month at 3:00.
Well, and to piggyback on that, we do have the youth forum going on at Bonnie Lake High School this coming up Friday morning. I participated in it last year, and it's very satisfying. Plan on doing it again this year.
And I'll be there, too.
Yeah, and.
And there's still need somewhere to help.
Watson was there last year as well. He was a victim of my humor, I guess I should say. But it's very satisfying, and the kids all have wonderful points that they bring up that are very relevant to our areas. So you could, you could learn as much as we can teach them. So anybody who wishes to show up is certainly encouraged to. I know Mary Lee will do it. It's the youth forum.
Youth forum.
Bonnie Lake High School. Mary Lee is, runs it. And she's always looking for members of the community to come in and.
This one's Friday at 8:45 at the high school.
In the morning?
It's a long one. It's gonna be until.
I believe Leslie sent you all an email yesterday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really, again, I've done that all the years, too. We've gone to middle schools. About this community.
Mm-hmm.
And that it's a scary place to town, what they like, what they do. You can bring things for you back to council. They can help make it a better place for kids when they grow up.
Oh, absolutely.
So just things you forget about until you talk to students. And I got a couple more things real quick. The, our, the songs and the Christmas tree line last Friday was wonderful. David Wells and everyone did a great job. I think that's real important, us to have something like that. And I'm glad what he has did with the tree you have, we lit up out there and stuff to brighten up. The only thing I'd like to ask, to think about, years ago, we had talked about putting a pavilion here in the city, like they have in Puyallup. And to get a community center will take quite some time, a lot of money. We had a one-time talked about putting a community pavilion where you would have a kitchen, a area, like if you've ever been down, the door's open both sides. They have bathrooms. That's all they have, and they have a grass area and parking lot. Our city could use something like this wonderfully. And if that area where they have the Christmas party at, the tree lions and the songs at, goes away because of the police department, what's going to? You need something like that in our downtown section. And what a great way to gather. And who knows? If you put that over there, you might convince the library to move their library over there by the Lancher Kids' House and make that a community area in the long run. And then get the parks and all the ball fields over there in Midtown Park. Because sometimes they just don't work together. They need lots of room for those ball fields or the frisbees or the, is that bike when we talked about? The push?
Pump tractor.
Oh, yeah, the pump kids, they love that thing. You need room for that type of stuff. This is a big racehorse. So I think just putting a bug in your ears, something to think about in the future, too.
No, absolutely.
And and one more thing, but it went over here.
Oh, it happens to me all the time. I'm sure you'll think of it, you know, 3:00 in the morning.
But you know, it's been a pleasure working with all of you, learning, challenging, arguing, enjoying, and growing with all of you over the past 12 years. I can't think of anything else. I would have rather do, learn about our city than be on the city council with the staff here and now talk to all of them later on and stuff. But it's been a real joy. And I mean, I always agree with things. We always walk out shaking hands and smiling because of what it's all about.
Well, that's the whole point, yeah.
It's been very rewarding for me, so I, I thank all of you.
It's a good thing why we have, we had the consensus.
One more meeting.
Differing opinions to.
Yeah.
Get all of that. All right, one more thing.
All I got. Oh, you said one more meeting?
Oh, one more meeting. And Councilmember Evans.
So to piggyback off of your, your Christmas tree, in the last eight years, I've tried to be super fiscally responsible here and, and and have found that government is not always that. There's a lot of people here that are that. There are some that aren't. And just this lighted pole out here, and I won't even call it a Christmas tree, costs the city, the taxpayers $6,747.94, plus saw cutting charges, plus an electrician, plus labor from a department that's already short people. About $10,000 to put that lighted pole out there when we could have easily purchased a 30-foot porta-pole for under 30 bucks and a flagpole lighted tree for under $400. So it's just astounding that, that no one is paying attention to this kind of. Those that we put in charge of purchasing these things are not being held accountable for the lack of fiscal responsibility with the people's money. And it's, it still astounds me that it, it happens every day and, and there's no repercussions for it. So I, I hope the oncoming council and the existing council can continue bird-dogging these, these events, go through the vouchers. There's a lot of them there, but look for outstanding costs and things. We went to a commercial Christmas tree, probably the first thing we saw there. And I don't think there was any thought beyond a six-minute online purchase for a $6,747.94 lighted pole that we have out here on Main Street. So just please be cautious of that and make sure that you hold everyone accountable that can be for the, the money that they spend from the citizens that are already overtaxed and don't need to be burdened with a $6,747 lighted pole.
Now that we have that on the record, could you have Mr. Wells and Councilmember Evans, the effort that he did go through to the restrictions and limitations that we will present with?
Thanks.
All right. Anything else?
These restrictions that we put in place?
What's that?
Are these restrictions we put in our own place?
These are the market restrictions that Mr. Evans, or I'm sorry, Mr. Wells approached both me and Mr. Vodapich with.
All right. Councilmember McLemmons.
So two questions. I just thought of one. In January, if you forward that to me and the whole council, it's on an O P M A issue.
Oh, yes. Oh, trust me, you guys will, my, my work will not, will not stop.
Thank you. And two, we had a meeting of the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District Facilities Finance Committee, and we're getting ready to propose probably a significant bond effort. Most of it will be in the form of a middle school. If I had a crystal ball, it would look like I see a middle school in Tahali.
You, you don't need a crystal ball.
And I see, I see second phase of Sumner High School, right?
Yeah.
And it's not quite physics, but it is pretty, it is pretty much, when you look at math and if you obey math, the middle school does address and may allow the students at Bonnie Lake High School better by transferring students to two middle schools and pulling one grade level out of the high school down to, to two different middle schools. So it would allow them to reduce the pressure at Bonnie Lake that way. It kind of makes sense. But on the other hand, we're looking at a middle school in Tahali and a big high school in Sumner. And the bill's gonna come to Bonnie Lake. I think I made that clear, that that's kind of like people would see it.
They still.
With my normal, with my normal charm.
They still do a football stadium in Bonnie Lake, a big one?
We'll see if we can get that, right? I mean, that, that's, that'll be a struggle just because the high school is like, you know, well over $200 million, right? And the middle school's, you know, a little north of 1, 100 million. And, you know, the bonding limit is right around half a billion dollars, right? Pardon me?
Middle school? Oh.
Ah, Tahali.
Tahali. It's all that glass. Yes.
Well, you know, the, the reality is, you know, when you look at it, like I said, it's not physics, but the numbers do work, right? The, the middle, the, the pressure, a lot of pressure for middle school is coming from Tahali. And if they do that, they can change the, the way grades are handled at Bonnie Lake so they can actually reduce the student population by pulling ninth graders back to the two middle schools, right?
Yeah, but they've got to go somewhere. That leaves sixth grade coming back down to elementary school.
Well, yeah, and yeah, it's, it's, it's not without, I mean, yeah, it's not a straightforward process. And there's a lot of numbers that, that get played there. So anyway, that's, that's what I have, and I want as it comes out, the way it's gonna look.
Is this a March or February election?
You know, that I don't know. I think, yeah, I think they're trying to get ready for the March, right? Because they, they want us to finish our homework, I think, right away in the January. No, it's probably gonna be, it's not gonna be in March because we will, we will try to finish our homework in the January and February meeting. So I can't see that making it on the March ballot.
Okay. I appreciate that. Councilmember Fullerton, I'm, I'm sorry, I was thinking about the, the ballot calendar that goes on with that. But anyway, Councilmember Fullerton?
Yeah, so I brought this up at the tree lighting.
Mm-hmm.
I spoke to you about it. But I was thinking, like, I kind of found out about the tree lighting via text message from almost new council member Baldwin when she gets back on. She was like, is there a tree lighting this weekend? I was like, oh, wait a minute, let me go back through. So I mean, I'm just thinking, like, these are things that we should be announcing after we say the pledge of allegiance to our beautiful flag. Then we have announcements and we never seem to have any announcements. But I think it would be great if, you know, if staff wants to put on anything that's happening this month. Also, we could be adding, because I know that there's hardly ever anybody that comes to the committee meetings. So add on, okay, Thursday, Tuesday, the twelfth, we're gonna have finance and public safety and Tuesday, the whatever, you know? So just say weekly, what's gonna be happening next week and/or throughout the whole month. And then since December's kind of a big month, we should be saying, okay, we're gonna have tree lighting, we're gonna have hot cocoa on this day, we're gonna do this, whatever. So even if there's like a, a competition that's going on with the staff, I mean, I know, like, I think it was Halloween, I, I judged some competition with the staff for their Halloween decorations. So I don't know if they're doing the same thing for Christmas, but gosh, you know, if they want city council to be kind of more involved with the facility and with the staff and kind of get to know the staff a little bit better whenever there's an event going on where we could actually, because I, I see these people and if, if, if they don't have their name tag, then a lot of times I forget their name because I only see them, you know, once a week. I don't see them normally when they're doing their, throughout the day. If I passed them at Walmart, I probably wouldn't recognize them, you know? Or I'd be like, hey, you, you work at this. It'd be nice to kind of get invited and kind of come in and, and have it be announced every single week. And if we have the city clerk announce it, or if you announce it, or if you put one of the, you know, deputy mayor or somebody in charge of announcements, I think anything that's going on, we should, we should be aware, you know? And if something comes up with commerce, with some of the local businesses, then they could make announcements. There are people that's actually have email that they send out to their, their followers. And so they could, you know, if they chose to, they could make announcements if it's something that would interest the community. So anyway, that's just my two cents.
No, and I was very enthusiastic when you were talking about that. And, and very much in agreement because our messaging is, is in need of constant improvement of getting out.
Yeah, we can't just rely on the, you know, the website because you don't, it's not gonna be front page news. Hey, we're having Christmas tree lighting. You have to kind of go in and look for the events. It's three or four clicks away sometimes, you know?
And as we all know, our citizens want that.
I'm not a clicker.
They, they want to know what's going on and we had a very good turnout this year and hopefully we can build upon that. And I, I certainly agree with that. Put it on next. As far as us trying to do that. And we don't have our city clerk here, but we will talk about that as far as getting an announcement period. Things. Can do that. All right.
You know, I didn't know anything about that.
Well, I think.
Is that something I need to be invited to?
I think they rotate council people. I didn't go to the last one, so I think they're going between us or not. So you can't have more than three of us anyway there. So I think they go back and forth. I didn't do the last one, so that's.
See what it was.
I did Halloween, I think.
Yes, I wasn't invited.
But I think it was like last year, not this year. But anyway, so I just, you know, it'd be kind of fun. Then we can like raise our hand and go, yeah, I wanted to be part of that. And that way they don't have to call us at the last minute and say, hey, do you want to come and judge a little contest?
Okay, do we have anything else before we move on?
I want, I remember real quickly.
Oh, you remembered? Yeah, good.
I went to the community court. I missed you, Mr. Mayor. I thought you were gonna be there.
Yes, I was very, I, I wish I had been there. Our in custody calendar had a snagged where I could not make.
They have a very good monthly meeting there.
Yeah.
They have all their support team. Didn't realize all the people that helped, that helped them get these people through their drug and alcohol addiction process. Explain what they're doing. I met so, they're so wonderful, great people and stuff. It's good to hear what's going on there. And if you guys haven't been to community court when they have a graduation, I know, Council, Council, Deputy Mayor Carter's been there numerous times and stuff. It's really great to see. They've gone through, as, if you know people that go through all this, it's a struggle to get where they are. And for them to get to the process, to be drug testing rigor basis, to go through all the things, hoops they have to go through, and then finally graduate with our system here and go out without any charges, they've worked real hard. And so have not just the court, but the council there to support them and, and thank them for their, appreciate what they've done. And we have a beautiful new sign that's something that Kenny made for our community court, too. So, but.
It is beautiful.
Thank you. But that's something, if you haven't gone to them when she has them or puts it out to you, try. And also you learn what those people have been through and stuff.
Yeah, and I don't know if you had a chance to talk with our new community court coordinator, but she is outstanding. She, the, the experience she has in the, in the community and the different courts that she has, we really did score well in bringing her on. Yeah. Okay, Councilmember Evans?
Just to piggyback off of that and being involved in, as a council, they send out notifications when officers are being sworn in or promotions are happening or retirements. Please make as well, it means a lot to the officers, but even more, you'll get something out of it. And, and you don't, you're invited, you, you get to know them. It's, it's the coffee with the cop, National Night Out.
That's tomorrow.
It is. Tomorrow, it's four to six at Target in, in Bonnie Lake here. There's also one in the morning, ten to noon, I believe, yeah. Ten to noon.
And I don't have court and I always want coffee, so that, yeah.
Yeah, both, both are in Target tomorrow.
So where did we find out about that?
Uh, that came through an email, yeah. So you, you would have seen the email a week or two ago. Email would have been established at that point. It's also on the police Facebook page. They do a really great job maintaining that. So you'll see that there as well. But everything I just mentioned was police related, but all the community events, the, the Easter egg hunt, the, the gourd run, everything that, that the staff does to engage with the community is, is super key. And I encourage everyone to try and do that. Beautiful by Bonnie Lake is, is a great one. So as you find yourselves perusing the, the calendars. Also, just on a, on a side note, if anyone has Outlook, on our city website, there's actually a link to a eCalendar, a Google Calendar. You can put in your Outlook that will give you every single community event that the city does. So you can do it for the legislative stuff, so it gives you all the, all the committee meetings. You can do it for the community event, so that all pops up as well. So all you really have to do is look at your, your calendar once you download those. And they, they update when, when something gets canceled, it, it is removed from your calendar, so you're not showing up to something that doesn't.
That links to my Google Calendar, that's why it pops up.
Yeah, and, and I've had it all eight years and it's super helpful. So just some tips for engaging in the community. That's, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Is that something Chuck can help us with, getting that calendar set up?
I don't know. I take up eighty percent of Mr. McEwen's time with my computer issues, so I don't feel I have time.
Thank you for the information. I'm your email.
Oh, thank you.
It's app and I'll be.
All right, before, anything else before we move on to our discussion item? Okay, let's move on. Item, Ms. McDonald, could you?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Read it for us? Oh, I'm sorry?
Minutes?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, thank you. Review of council minutes? Councilmember? All right, thank you. Now we can move on to our discussion item. Ms. McDonald?
This is the discussion item, AB twenty-three dash one fifty-four, motion M twenty-three dash one fifty-four. A motion of the City of Bonnie Lake, Pierce County, Washington, authorizing the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement between the City of Bonnie Lake and the City of Sumner for the coordination of cooperative wastewater service.
Our last discussion board goes to consent agenda, is that correct?
That, that's the plan.
Yeah, we, it's on the consent agenda for next Tuesday. Okay. All right, any discussion? Councilmember Fullerton?
Yeah, so I was just reading through parts of the agreement, section five. That is under the contract management responsibilities for phase two expansion.
Really, really quick, Councilmember Fullerton, I think you're reading through the two thousand twelve agreement. I just want to make sure to point that out first.
Yes, is that, is that a different one?
What page are you on?
Yeah.
Page six.
Yeah, that's the existing two thousand twelve agreement that's no longer in effect.
Okay, so did we go through and underline the changes that, that were being made?
So, so what we provided here is, is, we talked at a staff level and providing a marked up version of that document basically would have resulted in a document that just had everything struck out. So what we did provide in your packet this evening is a marked up version of the new version that we reviewed on November twenty-first. The markups will show changes we made based on comments received at that meeting. So that's what you have in, in your packet this evening.
Well, that's what I'm looking at, but you're saying that that section is from an old section still, it's just not marked up?
The, the new agreement starts on page twenty-nine.
Okay. Well, is it, is it still on there that approval of each city's, city council? So for, should changes in design and the construction costs necessitate exceeding the bid award amounts, including the contingency of any, the parties agree to seek additional approval from each city, cities, city council, which approval shall not be unreasonably withheld? So is that still in the new agreement?
No, that, that language was removed because that, that language was specifically in that version of the agreement to speak to responsibilities governing the last plant expansion that was done eleven, twelve, thirteen years ago.
Okay.
So that was some of the legacy language that we removed from the new agreement because it's no longer applicable.
Perfect.
Councilmember Roach?
I've got some questions, so it's, it's not so much on the new one, but on the old one, just to understand. So from what I was reading, so I think it was two thousand twelve, that's when the last upgrade was. So I think both Sumner and Bonnie Lake received a loan for that. I was wondering about the loan terms. Are we still paying on that or we pay? And if so?
I believe the sewer utility, I'd have to double check just to be sure, but I believe we still have debt service that we're paying towards the, the Public Works Trust Fund loans that paid for that expansion.
Is Ms. Ryerson here tonight?
No.
I don't, okay.
Okay, should I ask you that question then in follow-up or is that one for someone who's not here?
I can look into it for you.
Okay, that'd be great. I'd just like to know what the, what the terms are, what we're paying currently and the interest rate and how much longer we have. The other question I had, let me go back to my notes here. In section ten point O, it talks about the payment in lieu of taxes.
Yes.
So we were paying a, a five percent from that two thousand twelve and it sunsetted in the end of last year, two thousand twenty-two.
Correct.
Need to know more about the, how much is that five percent in dollar amounts? And we're not paying anymore. I'm wondering what the, what we were paying and is that money going somewhere else at this point or what are we saving?
So that, the, the amount varied. It was five percent of whatever the bill for service was from Sumner for that given month. So it did vary. I could try and take. Now been sunset almost a year. I don't recall exactly right now what that total was. But typically, over the years that I've been here, we've been paying monthly service bills that varied anywhere from a hundred thousand to two hundred and twenty thousand a month, depending upon project load and how much water was discharged to the plant. So it would have been five percent of that total. And then as far as its use, I believe, I'm flipping back through to that, the old agreement now. I don't believe that it was very specific in there about where those funds went, other than that we were due to pay them to the City of Sumner in lieu of taxes being paid by them, if I recall.
Okay.
Councilmember Roach, what section was that?
It was section ten point O.
Ah, yes, okay, there it is. Yeah, I could, I could do a little bit more legwork there to get you answers on that as well. I, I, Mike, I hate to put you on the spot here, but would you happen to have any information on the pilot fee that, that you could share?
I'd rather do.
Yep.
It's not real clear.
Yep, understood, yeah, no, that's fair.
And Mr. Johnstone, is that a question that Ms. Ryerson might be able to pull up? Because I, even though she is out, I do know that she is doing some work and she's actually looking forward to things like this to answer. Might be something to direct Councilmember Roach to.
As, work with our administrative supervisor who handles the, the payment of the bills each month and get those totals at TRIS over in, in Public Works.
Okay.
As far as how, I, I believe you had a question about how those funds were being utilized once they were paid. I would need to work with the City of Sumner to identify that specifically, but I can get you that information.
Okay, great, thanks. So I'm new. A lot of what I heard when I was out there on the street is still about the, the water and the sewer rates. So the, the reason I'm asking that, I would like to know that five percent, can we capture that and apply it to the rates or discount anyway, as a way of reducing rates? And then the other question is just how we're, how we're currently financing, so we can find out about that, how much longer we have and what the terms are on it and see if there's potential to that for ways to lower rates as well. And then I have a question that is old, but the new contract as well, and that's talking about the service areas. So I think in the new contract, it's, I have it as D slash four. I don't know if that's gonna help you find it. But it talks about the domestic users. So, or the non-domestic users, sorry. So the way I understand it, so correct me if I'm wrong, but we can, we can service our area, but we can also service other people outside of our area? Is that correct?
So we do have some limited areas where our sewer system extends beyond city limits and serves some residential areas, specifically Bonnie Lake Estates out on Barcubine Road in the area of the Reed property, and that's familiar. We do service that area.
And I'm just wondering if, I mean, is, is that something we can look into to, you bring more on? You want a higher fee because they're outside of our area? Or just another way of potentially expanding that program and helping to subsidize the rates of city pairs? Have we looked at that at all?
Not looked into expansion of the sewer system area beyond areas that have already been included in our service area. These were included some time ago. Certainly it's a conversation that could be taken up again, though.
Councilmember Evans?
In consideration of that, what is our capacity limit?
Depends on how you.
Low BOD or?
Manability down in Sumner.
Yeah, so.
It's great to subsidize, I'm just wondering if we.
So do we just have the room in the plant?
Yeah, if we capture too much, does it?
Yeah, so I can, I can share with you actually, in response to Councilmember McLemmons's request last time we talked, I do have some numbers as far as like percent-wise capacity that we're currently using in the plant. And I can share those with you here in a moment. I can tell you that right now, we do have areas within our sewer sys, sewer, sewer service area that we currently do not serve. So the priority at this point would be to make sure we reserve capacity for those areas currently in our sewer system, uh, service area before seeking to expand into other areas. And one of the big ones there that I'm thinking about, we've referred to here before as Plateau 465, which is south, south of town, if you will, heading towards Tahale. That is a property that I believe is currently owned by. And could be developed at some point and I believe it's a hundred and some odd acres, so we could see several thousand homes go in down there. So that is, that is just something to consider. But as far as current use in the plant, right now, as far as influent flow is concerned, the city of Bonnie Lake is using 38% of its capacity for just flow into the plant. We're using 62% of our capacity that's allocated to BOD, which is our biochemical oxygen demand, that's the amount of oxygen being consumed in the conversion of organic material. And then our total suspended solids were at 48%. Overall, when you can, Sumner's load on the plant, the plant as a whole between the two users is at, in those same categories, 36% use for flow, 58% for BOD and 44%. So there is room still in the plant, both overall and then specifically with Bonnie Lake's share to accommodate some future growth. We believe that's enough to currently handle the midtown development that's been talked about and any of the smaller development that's currently going on or is forecasted to go on, we would more than likely be facing the need to expand the plant if Plateau 465 develops in the future.
What was the intended capacity when that was designed and built?
So currently, the plant is designed for a total capacity of 6.1 MGD. The city of Bonnie Lake's share of that is 3.3.
And, and that was, it was, obviously, when this was built, it was, it was probably intended for 50-year lifespan with expansion along the ways? Or, are we along, are we tracking, you know, like when we talk about UGA and, and growth targets, are we where we need to be or are we over that?
At this time, at this time, we're roughly where we need to be. We're pretty much on, on track for what we were expecting as. Movement is concerned. What we are holding in reserve is just, okay, what's going to happen when Plateau, if and when Plateau 465 comes along?
And Mr. Johnstone, if you could, since we are, this is public, what is MGD so that people can understand what it is?
Sure, million gallons per day.
Okay. Oh, Councilmember Swatman.
Yeah, thank you. Did we get any, besides the red and blue lining on the term of that agreement, it's still kind of nebulous there? It kind of reads to me that it's kind of an open-ended agreement or what have you?
Just in general or any particular?
Well, does it expire? You know, there's a term, okay, this agreement's good for the next five years and then we'll figure out the next one after that, right? It doesn't read that way to me.
So, we did, as far as the language that we put in there, we thought we did address the need that you had for providing a period for review as well as language under seven A and termination that says, that indicates that upon 10 years' advance written notice, that Bonnie Lake may terminate the agreement.
Solely itself kind of thing, right? Either party should be able to get out of the agreement.
Uh, it, it does, it, the, the language does say, provided however Bonnie Lake may terminate this agreement upon 10 years' advance written notice, upon such notice, parties will meet and confer to ensure a timely and efficient transition. Free a termination date and process.
We don't want Sumner to have that option.
Why not? Either party, you know, it's, it's a service agreement.
I understand that, but we don't have an option, they, they keep the option.
Unless we build our own, we don't have a place to put our stuff.
Well, yeah.
Who's Johnstone's house?
Yeah, but that, that's the weird thing right now, too, that I can't figure out, right? Because if you're from a governmental perspective, if you're looking at that and you're saying, well, you know, there's language in that term that talks about. Which in there that talks about the, the agreement that doesn't exist that we're operating under that we need to agree to that we operated under, right? Because my understanding is right now that we don't have an agreement and we haven't had an agreement. There is no agreement, right? So, you know, when a bill shows up at our door, how are we paying that bill? You know, there's no agreement. Why are they still servicing our sewer? And for what cost, right? But there's just that practicality of, while it's still going down there, we still are getting service, we still have to pay for it. So that's, that's kind of weird, I don't, I don't understand why they went back on that one. But more to the point, I guess, of the discussion is, you know. Long-term, and I do mean 50 years plus, the city of Bonnie Lake needs to figure out how to get away from a freshwater outflow plant. If the city of Bonnie Lake continues on a long-term basis to have a freshwater outlet flow plant or any city for that minds, that they're going to get hosed and they're going to have extraordinarily high, unbelievable sewer bills in the future. We've seen that with the PFOS and stuff like that. You know, this will continue to be just untenable to pay for. So the, the, we shouldn't be talking about how to expand that plant, we should be talking about how to get out of that plant.
In other words, alternatives?
Yes, long-term, we're talking 50 years down the road. That should be the direction that the, the, the political officials of the cities should be thinking about. Those, those plants are just, you know. Tahale did not hook up to the Sumner plant.
Right.
That was probably an option that would have been a little bit impractical for them, but they probably could have got something with that. They went with a different situation. Anyways, you know, for this particular agreement, I don't, you know, I understand a couple of things about it because, you know, why, you know, I'll ask this, if you're walking into the, this agreement, why are we paying for half of the staff? Or why are we paying for more than half of the staff, right? And you, some people are looking at me like, okay, he's crazy. Well, if we weren't there, how much of this, you know, this is an agreement between two parties, and so why do we end up paying whatever it is, 70% or 60% of the staff, right? That's kind of a, that kind of concept. So our sewer people are paying for the, the salaries of the mayor of, of Sumner. You know, because they're attributed and they're spread across that, right? That is one component of a lot of the charges because, of course, we pay for service, BOD and the flow, we obviously have to pay for what we use on that aspect, right? Because that's, that's pretty clear, you know, you can, those charges go right into that. So there's those kind of concepts that I think that you should look at on those charges. I don't think anybody has gave us a detail of what we actually get charged for that plant, you know? How hard is it to go down the detail? I know that I'm, most of the council members don't care, they don't want to deal with it because every elected official, the way they deal with what they call captured people because the sewer user is going to pay their bill or they're going to get thrown out of their house and they're going to leave. That's their choice. The political official will make the decision to say, well, that's what the deal we had. Why don't we even look at the details of it? Because that's always been an irritant to me. We've never went through the details, you have, you know, the staff does it at a high level, which they always do, and they, you know, there's nothing bad about what goes on there. The staff does a great job in both cities of doing everything with that. But where is the responsibility of elected officials to understand the exact details of that, you know? Those kind of aspects of the charges there, I don't understand why. Well, I just stated why, because basically, you know, in my opinion, the large amount of political officials and just not us, everyone around is too lazy to look at the details and try to figure out how to do that. Why, you know, major election point that I ran on was utility charges and I just kind of refused to just gloss it over. And I'd really like to understand all the charges that we get charged for. I don't see why, you know, like I said, that we have to pay for half or more than half of the staff, there's all those types of things that go into that. They have, so, you know, go back to, and this is kind of interesting, somebody never brought up, there's Sumner Links, right? Does somebody want to talk about Sumner Links? No?
Yeah.
The golf course? What is that? They used to have that?
Talking about the golf course that used to exist, Sumner Meadows?
Right, yeah, right. So, how did, how was that purchased, right? It was purchased largely with sewer funds. So, because it was a place for them to put their afla, their aflue, take a spray out there and they bought it for whatever it was, X number of millions of dollars back then or something like that. There's six parcels sitting out there, today's value is like 30 plus, plus, plus million dollars. What's going to happen when they sell that, right? You know, and that. I don't know, you know, was that, was that all pre-done? You know, we're in this cooperative agreement with the city of Bonnie, or the city of Sumner. And how does that work into the equation? Is that was, that was, oh, honey, that was my money before? And now you don't worry about that 30 million that showed up on my doorstep, that's going to show up in their sewer utility because we just had a big discussion about how you can't just put that back in your general fund?
Ms. Robertson, how, how involved would it be to address Councilmember Swatman's concerns as far as his? Get it?
As I understand his concerns, I think they are already addressed in the draft agreement under section four administration. There are a lot of checks and balances in this agreement that allow Bonnie Lake to verify the financial aspects. First, there's the JAC, which is the Joint Advisory Committee, that has been expanded, it's both mayors and three council members from each city. That committee will look at all of the major expenditures, they will look at the, the operations and that, that has been increased to four times a year. Internally, we're hoping, we are planning, not hoping, planning to add to the committee report section of the council agendas when there's been a JAC meeting, a prompt, so that the JAC committee, committee members can share with their colleagues at the council here what happened at those meetings. The Technical Working Group, which is four staff members with expertise from each city. When, when there are expenditures of $100,000 or more, those are going to the committees. In addition, there's audit allowances where if we believe that Sumner is, if we want information from them, one, we can ask for information, there's information sharing. But in addition, we can audit their books with regard to the wastewater treatment facility expenses and then, and reporting requirements. So, that is, those are all of the things in section four. The JAC is outlined in more detail down below. So, they are making, there, you know, there's going to be some cooperation, was there something I needed to cover? So, yeah, I'm looking at it on my phone, um, so.
The, one of the questions I have with that is that if the council does approve the interlocal agreement next week, do we have prospective dates? Like maybe March or something fairly soon so that?
I know we have Sumner folks in the audience.
Yeah, yeah.
We just had one recently.
Maybe Director Johnstone can answer that.
All, all of those are great committees, but they don't do anything, right? That's great for a voice on the floor, but they don't do anything because the agreement specifically establishes the percentages and what it amounts to is Sumner comes up with a budget and they charge us a percent. That's all that it is, that's, that's all that's in the agreement. You can talk about a joint advisory committee all day long, which is great and, you know, that's fantastic because. Haves work together great, they do an awesome job about that. But ultimately, it's Sumner's place, it's Sumner's property, they say, this is what we're going to spend and you're going to pay X amount of it, you know? When I go to rent or lease a building or something like that, I want to know how much I'm going to get charged for X number of years. I don't, I don't want to know a percent, you know, that's just insanely ridiculous. I would never go to somebody's house, lease it out and say, oh, by the way, you know, how much is the lease? And they're going to say, well, it's 60% of the cost. And it's like, well, that's not the way it works.
So.
You know, right?
If I can respond, so, well, not really. So with regard to commercial leases, there is often a component that.
All the triple net, which is.
Talks about the CAM, the common area maintenance charges, and they do pay their percentage of that.
They do.
Based on the actual cost.
Well, there should be a component of that kind of a cost associated with this type of agreement is my, I'm looking at more of a commercial type agreement and that's not what this is and I understand that's not where this is going, so, you know, I lose out on this thing every time because Sumner has been like overcharging the city of Bonnie Lake for the cost of operating that plant down there forever. And that's. Because, you know, that's just the way it is.
Well, the, the other difference between this agreement and, for example, a commercial lease is that all of the things that Sumner would be doing with regard to capital expenses, those are all subject to the protections under state law with regard to biddings, it has to be transparent, they have to be accountable to their people as well.
It doesn't make any difference, though, because Sumner is doing the design, they're doing all of the requirements of it, they say they want a Tesla, we say we could do it with a Ford, they say, no, we're using a Tesla model and they go out to bid with the requirements to have the Tesla in there and then that's all fine and good, it's all through state bidding laws, but the cost is extraordinary because why are you going to buy silver when you can buy gold because half of the, of the cost is being attributed to somebody else? It's just, you know, there's no way to control the cost.
Councilmember Swatman, with, if, if the agreement is voted in and we do have this expanded joint committee before, and pardon the pun, before you poo-poo it, would you be willing to be part of that commission to, maybe a lot of your questions and concerns can be answered if you would be there with me to actually answer them?
If you would go, Mr. Mayor, I would appreciate that.
Oh, I'm going.
If we could go together, that would be very appreciated.
Beauty.
Is that a pact?
Hmm?
Is that a pact?
It's an interlocal agreement.
Oh, no.
Oh, yes, Councilmember, Councilmember Roach.
Yeah, sort of question, can you walk me through, so I think I read anything over $100,000 would be, would have to, is, well, take me through it, does it go to that committee then and there is a discussion about the Lexus and the Ford and there's?
Yes.
Fate there, I mean, do we have?
Where is that?
Input at that point?
Mr. Swatman goes to regular meetings three times a year, I believe, he's done it forever, so he.
And currently, we have one, just one person, one council member?
Right. Changed to have the new one.
We'll have more and that's good.
This will go to three?
I went to one of them a long time ago.
They're really good about that ultimately, you know, they're, the staffs, Sumner and Bonnie Lake. Things, but they're, they're really professional and they do a great job about that, but it's hard to get around buying the Lexus when you don't have to pay for it.
And, and I, I totally get where Councilmember Swatman is coming from, I've heard these comments a couple of times now.
For a few years?
For a few years. I, I, I would like to, I mean, he's already indicated the percentages, I just think that, that it bears repeating that for Sumner to go with the Lexus does mean that 46% of the cost of that Lexus is going to be paid by Sumner sewer customers. So the, the dramatic, there isn't a dramatic difference in, in the, the costs here. Further, I'd want to reiterate that, that staff is engaging with, Bonnie Lake staff is engaging with city of Sumner staff on all of these design issues so that we can truth check what's going on, see for our own eyes the information that the consultants are coming back with and be able to say, hey, that we agree that either this is the right selection or no, we don't believe it is, we have concerns. So I, I don't, again, I, I, I hear Councilmember Swatman's comments, but I don't necessarily agree that it's just a, a blank check that gets written with absolutely no oversight or ability to comment or engage in discussion about alternatives that are being selected.
Well, I disagree with that a little bit because I've been. And things they have brought forward, as you mentioned before about vehicles and personnel and so on, I've questioned, they say they need another person hired, another vehicle for this and they went, okay. What, how can they question? And I've stood off the cuff, not trying to cause, cause them dishonest, but where's that person going? Where's that vehicle going to? There's no checks and balances except for, and they're a great city, I trust them implicitly, but we don't really now have a, anyone down there working there to observe what's going on to help assist them or seeing that they need a Porsche or just a pickup truck that's, you know, used truck for it. And that's the problem with this whole program is they're bringing it forward to your committee, Dan goes those, yes, we really need this, this is the right thing to do, we don't have the background knowledge to have that dryer that's going to put in there, it's going to cost us so much money for it. You do, but as a council, we don't really have the ability to discuss or see that and you don't have anyone on site serving, being part of the process. If this is a joint group, then we should have two or three employees down there and they should take two or three off. And then we see what's going on and we're totally involved. Then you could have somebody come to these meetings, your council and say, so what's going on and we really need those guys?
So, you know, in your response to staffing, I, you know, the, the idea that we would have employees down there is, is certainly something to consider, but just keep in mind, you are going to be increasing the number of sewer employees by three in Bonnie Lake. And so far, I've always been met with a no when it comes to, it's a real battle to get increased numbers of staff in our utilities.
If you're going to decrease the cost of us down there, Sumner.
I'm going, I'm sorry, I didn't.
If you're going to decrease the cost of us on the Sumner side, then that money should come back to us. So they're cutting out three employees, that three employee FTEs should come back to us.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, I, I just, I, I just, I'm, I'm, I, I think that that is something that would be, have, have to be evaluated, there's an idea, there's the idea that this staff will require specialized training for a piece of infrastructure that, you know, is. There's, there's other items to consider there. One of the things that we've desired to set up with this agreement is that with those JAC committee meetings, that we would add an item to the agenda for the workshops that follow that meeting, workshop that we have up here, so that the three council members that attend have the ability to share what they're learning and staff, of course, is here to provide support as well, so that they can then share that with the rest of the, you know, their, their council members.
Roommate.
So.
Yeah, kind of in the same manner that we have our committee reports every, every city council meeting, it could be the same thing.
Right.
Oh, yes, Councilmember McClyman.
Yeah, so I, I, I really struggle with the termination language and with the term of the contract. I think that, I don't understand why, why this agreement can't be limited to an explicit term. The termination, I think 10 years. I think if you're going to put 10 years in there, then I think in paragraph F, you I think if you're going to put 10 years in there, then I think in Paragraph F, you need to strike the last clause of that paragraph. I think Bonny Lake, the citizens of Bonny Lake, need a way, they need knobs and dials to begin to turn to control costs, because our costs are, are larger than anybody else's. So, we need to, I don't see any knobs or dials in here, I see the JAC, but the JAC is more of a complaint department, it's not a knob. All I get to do is say, we don't like this. A knob is, we're going to go buy this from, to Holly, right? Or work with a new development out there and build an alternative solution and use that for 80%. Because our costs are, our costs are significant, they're higher than most, and I don't see a single knob in here for me to turn, to put pressure on or to control. I just see an unbounded liability to continue in this agreement indefinitely, and it will take at least 10 years to fix it if something goes wrong. So, yeah, I really struggle with those, with those clauses, I've already seen something to say. The term of the agreement is for a term of five years, and to be renewed, you know, for another five years with the consent of, of the councils. And then, I really think, regardless, it's probably wise to strike the last clause of Paragraph F.
Councilmember McLeimans, is that F in Section 5, where, where are you talking about there?
Yeah, Paragraph F, Section, getting there, 5, yeah, F.
What page is it on?
I'm getting there. Let me get back, it's page 37 of 41, page 9. Is, it starts there, it's on the following page, page 10. Oh, no, is that it?
Are you on the new one or the last?
No, no, no.
Are you on page 10 of the agreement, council member?
Hold on.
I believe it is, yeah.
You can drag this thing
And I'll go ahead and address that if I may. We heard the staff, the strike drafts in this agreement are all from the changes from the last council meeting, because we really tried to work hard to reflect the council's interests, and we met with Sumner to make some revisions. The use of another treatment facility, the addition of such consent not to be unreasonably withheld is very protective of Bonny Lake. If Bonny Lake wanted to, for example, to send some sewage to the Pierce County wastewater treatment facility, because we're growing beyond the Sumner, or the geography makes it flow better that way, we could give notice to Sumner to do it, and, and they hold their consent. So, that was a change, because we heard you last time. Does that make sense?
Kind of piggybacking on that, Ms. Robertson, I was a bit concerned about the 10-year written notice that we would have to give on, on something like that. That seems to be quite a commitment.
The basis for that is that we need a place for the sewage to go.
No, it doesn't matter, because, you know, it should be shorter term, I agree with Councilmember McLeimans, it's five years.
So, if, if we had, I guess, I'll just share from a legal risk perspective, if we had only a five-year term, and
That's fine.
Staff forgot to renegotiate, what happens then? The sewage has to have a place to go.
What, what did happen then?
So
Right? Because recall, it's my impression that we do not have an agreement as we sit here today.
We do.
We do?
Yeah, the agreement that's in your packet.
No, that's not what this agreement says, right? It says that there was, it says specifically, explicitly in this one, that the agreement is not in force, the previous one.
I don't think that that's true, there, I was looking at this earlier tonight.
Termination agreement?
And if you look at Section 21, it says the intent is the party will continue to, you know, it's the termination provision that it continues to operate. We need a place to send our sewage, we don't have another alternative right now, we're using Sumner and sharing the costs with them
That's fine.
To the percentage. So, it would take us, we estimated, based on my discussions with Director Johnstone, at least 10 years to
It didn't take them that long to build Pierce County's
Build a new
Pierce County did not take that long to build the
So, I think, I think there's some important differences, just to make sure we get on, on record, you know, Pierce County is providing regional wastewater treatment, and what we're talking about here, if we were to go on our own way, is that we're talking about building a treatment plant that would be for one city.
Yeah, that's fine, but what if it's joint with Holly?
I'll get there, I'll get there. And so, what we run into is the fact that at the Department of Ecology level, the preference appears to be, I don't have a, somebody I can cite on this, I'm only speaking from my own experience, so far as that, is that their preference would be that the regional type of operation is preferable, because they don't want to see
Oh, yeah.
You know, individuals, I mean, we've had, I think, this discussion before, you know? So, and perhaps conservatively, but when looking at a timeframe for the agreement, what we considered was the time it would take to achieve the permitting necessary to construct it, go through the design, and then probably, most critically, figure out how to pay for it. Because as we've, as we've talked about previously, for the size of city we are, that potentially could grow by several thousand homes.
Sure.
We're looking at a, at an expense that could be on a neighborhood of 60, 70, 80 million dollars. This is, is not cheap to build, and then you have to staff it and maintain it forever. And so, that was our concern anyways, about the 10 years, and making sure it was a lengthy window.
That would be the three employees that Councilmember Watson was
Plus, plus.
Well, you know, in the term there, on page, what are we on there, right? You found it now, page 33, explicitly says the parties acknowledge that they have been operating without an active agreement.
Yeah, and thank you for bringing that up, actually, that's a great point. We're like working in partnership tonight. I did speak with Sumner about that the other day, and I think there was some confusion, and we may need to go back and, and address this, Jennifer, because I think there was some confusion about the language regarding specifically the pilot fee that ended, and, and the overall agreement. The pilot fee definitely is done, but I believe that that is, is a misstatement, that the agreement itself is still in and is drafted.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's why we should be able to do five years instead of 10, because if it's still in operation, like if it expires, we're still operating under the old contract until we renegotiate a new one, so.
Just give five a try, what can go wrong?
Hey. An engineer to end, come on.
Councilmember Roach had a concern.
Just one more question on the, so, back in 2012, I think FEMA, you know, redid the maps, and we had to spend money to go up to floodwater, or whatever, you have the flood wall. We know, are they going to change them at any point, or are we just kind of at the whim of what FEMA is going to do, or any, any changes from ecology on flume requirements and things that's going to cost money at some point?
Specifically, where floodplains are concerned, I've not heard any discussion recently, or, you know, and, and at least since I've been here and working with Sumner about any, any changes potentially coming down the, the road. I don't anticipate anything like that happening at this time, but that's at this time.
We're not flooding right now, are we?
No.
No.
Flooding on Plateau, obviously. No, I can believe that.
Several feet over that map, I don't know what they have, it was in excess of whatever the 100-year, right? It was, you know, they built it, of course, several feet over that. What that means, I don't know.
Wasn't that based on potential dam flooding?
100-year flood, yeah.
And they, they, they just redid it, back in 2012, I think.
Yeah. Good news is, is that it's down there when it has a problem.
Right, but that's where all our flood goes, so, I guess it runs downhill, I guess you're, you're right.
Okay. Well, that seems a great way to conclude our meeting tonight. Oh, God, sorry, Council
I would not put this on the consent.
Okay. Do you have a motion to table it?
Well, not to table it, but it should be full council, I think we should have an open, public discussion at the meeting for anybody who cares to come.
Is this on for next week, council?
It's on for next week.
Yeah.
Which would technically, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, it's our last meeting for 2023, yes? Okay.